Good evening and welcome to the June 20, 2023 regular session of the Marion City Schools Board of Education. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Veronica, please call the roll.
Mr. Ratliff?
Here.
Ms. Dyer?
Here.
Mr. Weibling?
Here.
Mr. McKenna?
Here.
Mrs. McKay?
Here. All right, we come to the superintendent's report. The first thing we're going to do is recognize our spring athletes.
Yes, to Madam Board Chair and to other board members, good evening. I'm actually going to have our athletic director, Mr. Kearns, come up. Oh, there you are. I thought you went back there. This is one of the probably best parts of my job as superintendent, is to recognize the achievements of our students, and obviously led by our coaches and our athletic directors. So at this time, I'm going to ask Athletic Director Kearns to come up and recognize our spring athletic recognition.
Sure. Well, actually, I don't see six every year, so why don't you all come up? I'll talk about each one of these. Kind of like a circle right there. That's right there. All right, so these are, we have eight first teams in the MOC honorees this spring. I see somewhere in the name tonight, Ridge Barkley, the one that's not here, he's working on a construction job. And so I'll kind of go through these guys one at a time. Cameron Fags didn't make it this evening, so I can press it there. Honors and track. So first up here, Trinity Key. Trinity won two events. The event was the track meet, she won the long jump, and he was part of the four-by-one hundred-meter relay team. He's a two-and-a-half sport athlete here, played football, track, and long distance basketball at his time. I mentioned during the signing that my first year here, I had a dad in class. So that's kind of neat. Know their family a long time, great people, so Trinity, congratulations.
The superintendent and the board.
Jordan? Jordan Hensley, also this spring, a two-event winner at the track meet, MOC track meet. He was a four-by-one relay team member, as well as four-by-two. Jordan, in addition, I know it's not spring, but he was a four-sport athlete here, football, soccer, bowling, and of course, track and field. He was a three-time state qualifier in bowling, state runner-up as a team last year, and an individual state qualifier this year, so fantastic career by Jordan. Great job. Kayden Jones, right here in red, also had his mother in school years ago. Not my first year, but shortly after that, so pretty neat to have family members here. Kayden, also a member of the four-by-100-meter relay team and four-by-200-meter relay team this year. Also a football, and played a couple of years of basketball, too. Fantastic career. Great job. Ridge Barkley made it. We'll do Ridge next. Ridge was on the four-by-200-meter relay team this spring at track, first-teamer. He is a three-sport guy here at Harding. He's a wrestler, he was a district qualifier this winter, he's also one of our football players. Great job, Ridge. Austin Allen, getting the baseball cap over there, was a first-team all-conference baseball player for us this year. He batted over .300 and had a 1.88 ERA. Is that right, Coach? Yep, right, what I thought. Fantastic season, pretty unheatable curveball, I stood behind the plate and seen that, so great job. Matous Leshetsky was a first-team tennis member this spring on our boys' tennis team. He has done that two years in a row now. He did that as a singles player during the conference season, and then he and his brother, who we'll talk about here in a second, Alexander, played doubles and qualified for district. Matous actually is the first boy tennis player since 2007 to qualify for district two years in a row, so fantastic. Also, the conference musician, does it all here at Harding. Great kid. And Alexander Leshetsky, obviously that's Matous' brother, they're not twins, he's younger, but he also played singles tennis all year long. The thing I'll mention about both of them, they both beat players in the tournament that they had lost to earlier in the season to earn this first-team awards. They had a match where it was either first-team or second-team, they both won and beat guys that they had a hard time beating early in the season. It shows their work ethic, all that they've done. Again, Alexander was also a district qualifier this year, and hopefully doing it again next year. Great job. And like I said, Cameron Fags didn't make it this evening, but another round of applause for all these guys.
And congratulations again to all of our student athletes. You're welcome to stay if you want to, but you may also leave. Thank you so much for supporting family and friends. Before I move into the next item on the agenda, which is just an end-of-year kind of update, we do have a couple of changes to the agenda, which I'll pass down to you. We have one of the hires that we have on the agenda, Mackenzie Malone, has since resigned. And we also have another resignation that we just received, so I'll send those names down to you.
And they're off of the copy you have printed in front of you. The agenda that's printed in front of you has that adjustment.
I printed mine off earlier.
Just want to, this is our first-time gathering after graduation. We had a great graduation at Harding, for Harding, at the Grant Stadium. It was a pleasure to be there as superintendent and to have my first graduation ceremony. I look forward to many, many more. Also, we are up and running with summer school, so we're offering elementary school, middle school, and high school summer school. We did have a few glitches with transportation, but our transportation director is very creative and has been able to work that out for our families, and we will continue that for our elementary through June. Also, we have the partnership with the YMCA camp, that's at GW, so we do have our elementary students that are participating in that camp get transported midday over to GW. We were not able to secure transportation home at 4:00 for those students, but we were able to work that out with the parents, so students are still, they just have to have parent pickup from that George Washington camp for the summer that's sponsored by the Y. I also wanted to take an opportunity to officially welcome Mr. Kevin Hayner. As you know, he is our new assistant superintendent, so I'm looking forward to working with him as we move into the upcoming years. I also have provided the board, you have a copy of my transition plan, to the public if you go to the superintendent's website for Marion City Schools, there is a list there. And basically, it's the things that I am working on since the transition in April, as well as this summer, which many of you know, a big focus of mine is really trying to conduct listening and learning sessions with various groups to see how we can work in concert with them. So I just provided a copy of that, but it is available on the superintendent's website for Marion City Schools. Also, I'm going to have Greg Menzey come up briefly. So just so everyone understands the process, we have multiple ways that we assess students. So we assess them for achievement, which is to determine if they're proficient, meaning they're on grade level, or above, or below grade level. We also look at their growth, so we look at where a student starts and where a student ends. So we do have our IREDDI data, and we have our NWEA data, which is what we use at the high school. So I thought it would be, just to give you guys a preliminary update of how we look at the beginning of the year and the end-of-the-year scores. So Greg is just going to give an overview. This is a start. We'll be using this data along with the additional data that we'll get from our Ohio State testing to work on what our goals will be moving into the 23-24 school year. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to Greg. He's just going to give you a high level of some of our IREDDI achievement data, because obviously, this is an internal assessment that we do, so we have access immediately to it. So Greg, I'll go ahead and turn that over to you.
Sorry. So what I have up there is the achievement data on the top and the growth data on the bottom. So the achievement data is based on who is in the green or above. Now, green or above is in the grade level band or above grade level. So you can see a difference, or the numbers, from the beginning of the year to the end of the year for each grade level. And this slide is for reading, so you can see that in the elementary, all of the grade levels went up at least 10%, 10 percentage points from beginning of the year to the end of the year, with kindergarten there at 79% who were greener above at the end of the year. And, so I'm just giving you some highlights. Obviously, based on the data, like Ms. Delaflora said, this is just one piece that we look at. And with the achievement, obviously, achievement is not where we would like it to be, and that's why we use this as one of the pieces for how we plan and what we are going to use to plan. And in the growth, the expected typical growth, the median typical growth, is the middle student at the end of the year, so the expectation would be 100 for that exact middle student. So you can see that second and third grade were above that in reading at the elementary level. And then the stretch growth is just an ambitious number to try to help students get closer to grade level or stay above grade level. So next slide. So here we have the middle school. You can see here that each grade level did move up, not as much as the elementary. So that's where they stand at the end of the year, all above 15, but not as high as the elementary. And in the growth, the highlight there is that seventh-grade reading was at 120 for the median. And then high school uses NWEA, so you can see on this, you can see the average RIT-point growth from the beginning of the year to the end of the year, and at the high school level, the average expected growth is between two to three points. So you can see in ninth, 10th, and 12th grade, they were well above that average expected growth there. Now, the Met Spring growth, all those are above 50%, and when you think statistically with these tests, that's the expectation, is 50% or more would meet the expectation. If it was 100%, then they would move all the numbers up, just like with the IREDDI, that's why it's the median that you want at 100, and that means half are above and half are below. Because if everybody was above, they would always adjust those numbers. So that's statistically, being above 50 is not a bad thing. All right, and let's move to math. So in math, you can see here that in the elementary level, all the grade levels improved by at least 20%. You can see that at the beginning of the year, we had a lot in the single digits who were on or above grade level. And then at the end of the year, everybody improved at least 20, with kindergarten being the highest, they're again at 60%. Now, the growth, the medians are all below, the 100 for the median here, so that's definitely something we're going to look at with that math data. And in the middle school, everybody did improve. You can see eighth grade, they started at 1% in the green or above and ended at 16. And then in math, that was a great number for the math growth at the middle school, that the median was all, the medians were all above that 100%, 100% for that typical growth. Now, we don't have the high school one, because the Alex data that I get from a teacher at the high school, and I was on vacation, she was on vacation, so I didn't get a chance to get that for you. And like Ms. Delaflora said, this is one piece that we're looking at. We will compile lots of other breakdowns and stuff that we will look at, and the principals will look at when they get back. And as for you guys, as you think about data, if there's something specific that you want, just let us know, and we can see what we can do to compile exactly what you want and how you want it.
Thank you.
And the next thing I would just like to mention, because I know that we've spoken about it at previous board meetings, is just the baseball, softball update. So the update that I have around the new baseball and softball complex at Harding, I know we were supposed to have a full presentation about that plan. However, we have picked out the location of both fields, and the architects are still completing some of that work, so once we get those remaining detailed drawings, then we will bring that present, bring it to present in front of the full board. We also had to remove some of the old telephone poles that were placed out here. We are going to follow up. Jake and I will be meeting with the principal at Harding, as well as Athletic Director Kearns, and we're going to discuss what the plan is to give the girls' softball team a batting cage, which I think was the initial intent of that, but give them something that's going to meet their needs, and that is at the level of quality that we would want for our girls. The update on the baseball field at Grant is, tonight before you, there is a community donation for Board of Ed approval, and once that's approved, the work on the field at Grant will begin. And with that donation, I would like to take a moment to publicly thank Mr. Kevin Hall for coordinating the efforts to donate, as well as all of the individual donors that believe enough in Marion City Schools to invest in us. So we are very thankful for the work that you do and the commitment that you have to Marion City, knowing that you don't even have children in the district right now, but I just wanted to publicly take a moment to say thank you to you and to all of the other donors. And if I could just take a moment to acknowledge those people. Matthews Auto Group, TSW Consulting Services LLC, Chicago Title Agency of Marion, Dennis and Sarah Trashville Foundation, Bradley C. and Carol Beebaut, Gregory and Elena T. Sins, Y Corp Management LLC, HSSB LLC, Mark and Susan Parker, trustees of the Parker Family Foundation, and the Gerehizer Law Firm Incorporated. So from Marion City Schools and our staff, I would like to say thank you to all of the donors, and especially to you, Mr. Hall, for your efforts. Thank you. And that concludes my report.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, we'll go to item four, treasurer's report. Do I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report approving the minutes from May 1st and May 15?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I would like to add minutes on the, or add substance as to the meeting called to order Monday, May 15, 2023, specifically under the consent calendar approval. I think it was, most of the items on here was well documented. I don't believe this one was well documented at all. In fact, it points out that I asked to pull out administrative hires. There was a motion on the floor requesting, it was denied. Unfortunately, right above that, it talks about the consent calendar approval, where the board votes on the motion unless members of the board staff or public request specific items to be discussed and removed. I think the minute should reflect, not only did I ask to pull it out, I also told the board president, Madam President, you, that we have always removed the names and positions, that you were trying to block me from trying to talk about item B, which was the administrative hires. You actually responded yep, that you were trying to block me. I informed you that I'm a voting member of this board, that I'm not going to allow you to censor me. You stated that you were trying to follow Robert's rules of order. In doing so, I would probably, it wasn't in that meeting, but we do have parliamentary procedure, but it is only if it doesn't violate our rules, and in regular meeting rule, board rules, it obviously did violate that. So when you said you were trying to follow Robert's rules, I mean, it was incorrect, but the meeting should, minutes should reflect that you said that you were trying to follow the rules. Again, I ask it to be removed, and simply because I wanted to talk about the unequity of the district, that item B, the administrative hire section, had no equity in it, and there was no discussion, you had stated there was no discussion in the consent calendar, which is also true, and it should be reflected, there is no discussion in the consent calendar, that's why we remove items. You totally violated our board, the consent calendar approval, you totally violated our board rules under regular meetings, under the consent calendar, and when a board member, any board member asks that to be removed, it is to be removed with no action until it is removed. I think the minute should reflect that, and I'm asking that they properly reflect that, as anyone could go back and watch that, because we are recorded and see what I'm saying accurately reflects what should be in our board minute meetings.
I did have, we did have a motion, and we had a second, and that's why the vote went the way it did.
But Madam President, you can say that, but that violates, even on this, right above it, it violates that.
I've had people look at that meeting, Rocky.
Who?
I've had Ohio school boards look at it, and they said, "I did the right thing."
Well, I don't believe you did. You are in violation of our board rule.
That's your opinion.
I will read, I know it's our rules. I will read into the record, 165.1, regular meetings, under E consent agenda, "A member of the board may request any item be removed from the consent resolution," which I did, and you didn't remove it.
We...
Then it goes on to say, "No vote of the board will be required to remove an item from the consent agenda. A single member's request shall cause it to be relocated as an action item eligible for discussion." Period.
And as I explained, there was a motion and a second, and so we proceeded.
Oh, I understand that you silenced me and censored me and didn't allow that to be talked about.
I did not censor you. That would require another motion.
Well, you can, you can make all the motions you want. Obviously, you run the show here, you're not following our policies, which is laid out numerous times, and it will continue to be so as long as you're president, obviously. So I would like them to be properly reflected in what happened on that meeting. Thank you.
Could you simplify what you wanted the minutes to say? After saying all that, I'm not sure we could capture all of that. I don't have the mind amending the minutes to reflect, I guess this is your point, that you requested the removal of administrative contracts from the consent calendar, and you were denied that request.
Correct.
Is that enough to be said?
No, that's what is currently on here. Obviously, we have a ton of language all over this place on other items. This one was short and sweet, as you've just said. I don't believe that properly reflects it. I'm asking it to read that I stated, "We have always removed names and positions, you're trying to block me from trying to talk about item B." The president said, "Yep." Not only are you trying to block me, you know, I'm a voting member, and you're trying to censor me. She stated she's trying to follow Robert rules of order. I said, "I'm again asking it to be removed, simply because I want to talk about the unequity of this district. Item B has no equity in it." And basically, there was no, she, the board president, stated there was no discussion in the consent calendar for me to be able to talk about.
So I guess my question is, if you, if you knew that you wanted to amend the minutes to reflect that, could you have typed something up and maybe?
There's, I could have, I could have, I guess, typed the board agenda.
Because you are, you are requesting, you are requesting an amendment to the minutes, right? And you could type that up, and then we could give it...
Yeah, I understand what you're saying. You're asking me to type up what I want the minutes to read, pass it around. I have no problem doing that.
No, no, I don't want you to pass it around. I just want the treasurer to be able to type sufficiently what you want the amendment and the minutes to say.
Correct. And I will type that up and distribute it, so if anybody objects or whatever, we can...
That would be the May 15 meeting, so why don't we approve the May 1st minutes?
Yeah, I have no problem with the May 1st minutes.
And then hold until the next board meeting, the May 15 board minutes for approval, subject to whatever amendment we could all agree upon being in there. I'm not sure I agree with all of that that Rocky wants to put in there, but I'll certainly look at it. So I amend my motion to approve only the May 1st minutes at this time, please, Madam. I amend my statement. Thank you.
Further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Okay, Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Weibling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
And Mrs. McKay.
Yes, motion carried. All right. Item B, financial approvals. Motion to approve the final, the final file, bleh, following financial items. May 23, financial reports, fiscal year '23 appropriations, exhibit A, revenue revisions, exhibit B, fiscal year '23 estimated transfers and advances, exhibit C, set temporary appropriations for fiscal year at 25% of fiscal year '23. Year-end transactions, allow the treasurer to prove any necessary year-end transactions as needed to modify all budget accounts to bring into balance, amend appropriations of all funds and advance monies to all funds with deficit balances on June 30, 2023. Advances and changes will be reported at the July meeting, along with final appropriations and revenues if necessary. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weibling?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
And Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item C, donations. Treasurer recommends approval of the following donations for the renovation of the Voice Varsity Baseball Field at Grant Middle School. $10,000 from Matthews Auto Group, $10,000 from TSW Consulting Service LLC, $10,000 for Chicago Title Agency of Marion, $35,000 for the Dennis and Sarah Trashville Foundation, $2,000 from Brad and Carol Beebaut, $10,000 from Greg and Iliana Sins, $10,000 Y Corp Management LLC, $10,000 HSSB LLC, $10,000 Mark and Susan Parker, trustees of the Parker Family Foundation, $1,000 from the Gerehizer Law Firm, Inc., a $500 donation from Marion Community Foundation for Helping Hands. A $500 donation from Marion Community Foundation for Helping Hands. $1,860 Teach Grant donations from the Marion Community Foundation. Thanks to Vidya Iyengar and Pillar Credit Union, and Dean Jacobs of the Marion Community Foundation. Joanne Zucker Milner's Memorial Teachers Fund from the Marion Community Foundation for Harrison Elementary, $181. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved with our thanks. I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Just that again, I would thank, and as Ted said, and Olympia said, Mr. Kevin Hall, who has raised this. I actually think it was $100,000, but it's more than that. And I think Veronica put 98, obviously $10,000 came in past that, so they're over and above. Yeah. I think there's above, over and above what was promised to us. So obviously, we all are very appreciative.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Wybling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
And Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. We come now to the public participation time. This is how the board recognizes the value to school governance of public comment on educational issues, and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of community interest. Public participation is a time set aside for the board to listen to public comments, but is not intended as a time for dialogue. The board offers public participation to members of the public in accordance with the procedures below. The board applies these procedures to all speakers and does not discriminate based on the identity of the speaker, content of the speech, or viewpoint of the speaker. Time is limited to three minutes, and this is just a reminder that this is a business meeting that's done in public, not the reverse. So Cory Shay, if you'd like to step to the microphone, please.
Hey Cory. I am coming today because I have been having issues. My daughter was injured in the bus parking lot of Harding on April 18th due to the unsafe conditions in the parking lot, which still are pretty unsafe. I have pictures all the way from that date to even today. My daughter was walking off of the sidewalk into the bus parking lot to just go to the bus, rolled her ankle so bad that she is still to this day in an ankle brace. I had to take her to urgent care, get x-rays. Now, then to an orthopedic doctor to get more x-rays. She has gone through three weeks of orthopedic physical therapy. She had also gotten an MRI. I had to pay for crutches, a boot, and a brace. I have called numerous times to the administration building to get assistance, because in my opinion, this happened on school public grounds, and I think the school should be held liable due to the unsafe conditions. The parking lot was just recently repaired, from my understanding, just within the last couple of weeks. So this was after school, was closed. The conditions of the parking lot, I'm talking six inches plus about two feet in diameter, at least, of potholes. And it's not something that you just walk off the sidewalk and you already see them. It is literally just there. There's no way of seeing this before this happened. I had witnesses, numerous witnesses, from bus drivers, students, as well as the nurse, school nurse that worked here, because I had to pick my daughter up and immediately take her to urgent care. I've been calling every week to the assistant administrator, her name is Stephanie. I have been refused any insurance information. I have been refused callbacks. I have been refused emails back to me. No information given to me. I'm now in threat of collections due to ongoing bills, because I still can't get assistance from the Marion City Schools. I think this is unfair, and I'm requesting assistance for this. If not, I'm going to have to take it to litigation. Because to me, in my opinion, there's no reason I should have to cover thousands of dollars because our students are unsafe in a parking lot. And that's why I'm coming here today. So I'm reaching out for help.
I'm going to refer this to Olympia. I'm going to give her this back.
Okay.
I don't have a phone number for you, and you don't have to tell us.
I'll be more than happy to give you my phone number. I mean, I'm to the point, I need assistance, so.
Just write it down, and then I'll give this to her.
Could you tell me what parking lot you're referring to?
Yes, the bus parking lot, right outside.
On this side of the building?
Yes, I have pictures of it. And actually, the correction to fix the problem when the students were still in school was to put cones about eight feet out from the sidewalk, so the buses did not pull up into those potholes. And again, I can show you pictures, because I've taken them every week to show that nothing was done, even though I've called and I've asked numerous times. I had help from the principals here, but I couldn't get the administration to do anything for me.
I think she's referring it to the superintendent at this point for you, and going to have you privately give your number, so they can reach out to you after the meeting. I was just interested in what big, because we got a lot of parking spaces, which ones. So you're talking directly out these doors, like we're going straight over here, right?
Absolutely, yep. And it was all the way down from this door down to the third door, so.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Hall? You're good? Okay. All right. All right. Agenda confirmation. Item A, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay.
Are you saying that the two changes are already in the consent calendar? We've already, that's before us. Okay, thank you.
Okay. We'll go to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wybling?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item seven. Item A. Overnight trip for Harding High School Choir and Orchestra, New York City. Superintendent recommends approval of an overnight trip, field trip, for the Harding High School Choir and Orchestra to New York from April 11th through the 14th, 2024. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Other than, I just want to say, and I'm sure the board has the same sentiments, thank you for Ms. Rollins, her group, for putting together a well-organized packet for the superintendent to pass on to us. And also, these are the kind of trips, I think, that can cause massive change in our students to be able to go on something like this, to open their eyes to the world. That's exactly what we're here for. I commend her and her group for going above and beyond in actually taking that amount of people to New York City, which is like, I think they have planned 75 people to go on this trip. And the music boosters were helping in the fundraising efforts to do such a massive trip. It's their personal time and energy that they put into that, raising money for our kids, and the kids, also the kids working hard and raising money for themselves to go on this trip. So this is exactly the kind of thing that I like seeing, I'm sure the rest of the board does as well.
And I'm just hoping you guys don't have a shutdown of the freeway on the opposite, yes.
The bus driver, do you remember, the semi-driver fell asleep.
Yep, in front of the bus. According to Scott, it was four. Yeah, yeah. All right, we have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Wybling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right, item B, overnight trip, Harding High School Boys Basketball to Kissimmee, Florida. Superintendent recommends approval of an overnight trip for boys' basketball to attend camp in Kissimmee, Florida, from December 26th through the 30th, 2023. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wybling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item C, overnight trip, Harding High School Girls Basketball to Sandusky, Ohio. The superintendent recommends approval of an overnight trip for the Harding High School Girls Basketball Team to Sandusky, Ohio, from June 26th to the 28th, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Wybling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
And Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item D, non-teaching supplemental. Superintendent recommends Jeff Ratliff, head varsity wrestling coach, Step 2.5 for the 23-24 school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Mr. Wybling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Upstein.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item 5A, MOU Success by Six Summer Program. Superintendent recommends approval of the memorandum of understanding between Marion City Schools, United Way of North Central Ohio, and the YMCA to host the Success by Six Summer Program at Benjamin Harrison. Do I have a motion?
So moved, second.
Discussion?
I know it's something we, that's been continuing. I didn't know if Olympia wanted to expand on this at all. I know it's a program we've had going on, or if there's somebody that we have here that would want to, just so the public knows.
So the Success by Six Summer Program is our kindergarten readiness camp that we do right before school starts for those students that are coming into kindergarten. It's a joint partnership between Marion City Schools and the YMCA. And I believe United Way is on there, too. Yeah. United Way of North Central Ohio, Marion City Schools, and the YMCA. So it just is kind of like a summer school start for our kindergarten students, so that they can have an easier transition when they start school in August.
Thank you.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Wybling?
Yes.
Mr. McKenna?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item B, Ohio Guidestone Behavioral Health. Superintendent recommends approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Ohio Guidestone for the provision of behavioral health and supportive services for students during the 2023-24 school year. Do I have a motion?
Motion? Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, Madam President, this is, I think we had this issue last year, at least for me, it was an issue. This is a program that, obviously, by law are allowed to service minors 14 years of age and older without medication, without the consent or knowledge of the minor's parents or guardian. We are welcoming these people onto our campuses to give counseling services without parent or guardian consent. I do not believe we should be doing that. In fact, I think it's misleading. Their description of the program talks about onsite school services will allow providers the ability to consult with school professionals to promote success in the school environment, which is great. Outreach to parents and guardians keeps the family connected and assists with addressing issues in the home as needed, which is great. Together, providers, school personnel, and families work as a team to enhance students' social and emotional well-being, which is great. It's when you get into their provider responsibilities that then they tell you that the provider is permitted by law to provide behavioral health services to minor 14 years of age or older, excluding the use of medication, without the consent or knowledge of the minor's parents or guardian. In such cases, the minor's parents or guardian will not be informed of the services without the minor's consent, unless the provider determines that there is a compelling need for disclosure based on a substantial probability of harm to the minor or other persons, and it keeps going and going. I do not believe we should be providing counseling services without the parent or guardian being able to participate or know that their child is in said counseling. In this day and age, it's very dangerous, because we do have high rates of teenage suicide and bullying. And if these are something, and we don't know what sets those things off. So I believe if someone is in need of mental services, mental health services, that's great. They're identifying a problem and going. But I also believe their parent and guardian should be informed of that and participate in that process, because mental health affects a lot of people, and it's just not at school. They need to know what is going on with their minor child. And I, for one, am not for a behavioral health service that's not going to inform the parents and guardians that their kids are being treated.
I, too, last time, voted against that, just for that reason. Obviously, behavioral health is extremely important. We, as a board, and I individually, have voted for such measures. We have numerous agencies within the district that are supplying those services, or providing those services, I should say. I, too, do not feel comfortable with the amount of time that a 14, 15, 16, 17-year-old could spend with a counselor without the parents being aware of that.
I recall this conversation last year, and two things I do recall, I think, that the contract quotes state law in terms of being permitted to do what it's stated, you just read. Number two, our department, in every case, tries to make contact with the parents. Am I remembering that correctly, Kathy? So I think what you're saying there, you're reading the contract accurately, but you're not reading into that the procedure that we follow, and that's important.
I disagree, because this person, these people are in our buildings. So they can enter into counseling and have a counseling-student relationship where we're not being disclosed. They don't have to disclose to us, because the minor can say, you can't disclose this. It's in any counseling agreement. That's number one. Number two, when we talk about state law, that provides potentially a marker that you, saying you can do it, that doesn't mean we can't do better. So just because the state law allows a lot of things, does not mean we should be doing it, or at least doing it without the parent's permission. That's where we differ, and that's why I had my vote, and I understand. I'm not saying they're breaking the law. I don't want anybody to think they are. And the law is actually, the way I read their contract, is six sessions or a month, whichever happens sooner, I believe.
So one thing you said there, which was misinformation, was that one of these counselors could interact with a student without the knowledge of the district, and the principal, and folks in the district, in the building. I think that procedurally, that just never happens. In fact, they have to be referred to that counselor. A counselor just doesn't go into a classroom and pick out a student and say, hey, come with me. That just doesn't happen. So I think there are many, many safeguards in place from our procedures. The contract doesn't recite all of our procedures, but we certainly have procedures in place to protect children and when it's necessary to, certainly would not allow those services if a parent objects, so.
Well, I think there's a very real possibility that students know who's in their buildings on a day-to-day basis. They know who these people are. They can go ask them as they're walking into their office, saying, hey, can you talk to me a real second? And then, I don't want you to tell anybody. Confidentiality attaches at that point in time.
You might think that, but that's not the way it works.
I might think that, but that's the law and the way agency law works, and you know that as well.
And I guess my question is, of the 88 clients that we service, were there any irregularities? Were there any kinds of things that would present a red flag that we, as a board, or even as a district, would be concerned about? Of these 88 clients who were serviced, and the multiple clinicians that entered into our buildings? Were we, any red flags? I mean.
What kind of red flag are you talking about?
Well, I mean, if he's concerned, I mean.
I asked that question last time, and I got a strange look.
Well, I'm concerned, but I don't think, I don't think, once they start services, they would know who our individuals are. They're not going to know what is happening in the counseling sessions. That's between the student and the counselor. And potentially, their parents, if they're involved.
I'm saying the data, we're keeping great data, and I'm pretty sure that if there were some things that parents would find umbrage with, that we would know, right? If parents would.
Well, how would parents know? Because you can do six sessions, and you don't even know. So if you stop at three, and you say, don't tell my parents, your parents don't even know you. know you attended.
True.
I mean, that's, that becomes the issue that I have, but, I mean, and we have other agencies that don't have that in their contracts. I don't understand why this one does, but, and I think when we have contracts, we can say the board, at least, it passed last year, so I'm assuming it's going to pass this year, but they could say the board doesn't want that, that you have to reach out to parents. We don't have to have that in the contract, it's obviously negotiated, but we, in the past, have not negotiated that to change it, so, you know.
I will say that this agency requires this to be in their contract, and whether or not it's in the contract or not, it's Ohio Vice Code, so they could do it whether it was here or not. But they require it, just like if we were to make an agreement, sometimes we might require that we want something in there that another school district may not, because that might not be something that they would want to put in. But just to clarify, whether it would be in the contract or not, they would still have the right under state law to do what you're bringing in.
I understand they would have a right, Madam Superintendent, but the problem is, if, I, I would hope that all of our contracted officials are following said contract. So if we have a contract that says you can't do that, I don't know why they would be doing that. If they were doing that, we don't need to do business with those kind of people because they're violating what the board and the direction that the community wants to go. So if they're actually not following the contracts, they should be reported to this board, and we don't do business with those type of people. So I disagree with that assessment, but I understand that this agency might want it in there, or they don't do business with us. I, I understand that. I just am a no on this service, as I was last year, for the same reasons.
All right.
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
Okay. Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
No.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Ms. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right. Item C, MTC MOU for Career Advising Counseling. This is a cost of $160,000 and paid for through ESAR and Title Four. Superintendent recommends approval of the memorandum of understanding between Marion City Schools and Marion Technical College for career advising counseling services during the 23-24 school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Under number seven, it says the district shall reimburse the contractor, which is MTC, for the actual salary and benefit cost, and an additional fiscal fee of 8%. Is there a reason that we can't do this internally, have three counselors that are career counseling for our district? Because under this, we're paying their salary, we're paying the cost of benefits, plus we're paying an additional supervision fee, and the last time I checked, we have plenty of administrators, I'm sure we can find somebody to supervise these people. Is there a reason that we have to enter into this?
Yes. The salaries that they get, we don't have a salary schedule for, because it's not part of the negotiated agreement. So if they're going to be paid what they're going to be paid, it has to be through a third party.
So, but we would then, I mean, to me, that is not, that is so flawed in logic, I, I don't even know where to start with that.
Well, it's the law. I don't know what the logic is, but it's the law.
I mean, we could negotiate counselor salaries with any of the unions or even them directly, number one, and number two, I think this is illegal.
Well, they're not, they're not licensed folks.
Explain to me then, how do we take in tax dollars that's going to be spent on Marion City students, and then three months a year, these paid people by Marion City tax dollars are going to MTC and working for MTC?
We had this argument last year, and all those questions were answered. They, they work for us in the summer, they don't work for anybody else in the summer.
That's not what this agreement says.
They work for us all summer long, that was answered. And number two, we can't hire somebody that's not licensed and pay them what these folks get, and so you won't get any of these counselors to do what they do if we don't enter into an agreement with Marion Tech to do it. It's that simple.
What, what is the license they have that we wouldn't be able to get?
They don't have any license.
No.
They don't have any license?
No.
Without you just said they, they, we wouldn't be able to pay or get these people with the license they have if...
No, if I, if I said that, that was an error. They don't have a license. Am I correct in that? I mean, they may have, I don't know what they have or don't have, but...
I'm actually going to ask Marsha Pitts to come up because, and explain the difference why, I mean, because I think people get them confused between what a school counselor does...
Yeah.
And what the role of the career advising counseling, because I had to learn a lot when I came to Marion City, I didn't fully understand this either, but Marsha, this is her wheelhouse in her area, so...
Maybe, maybe my wheelhouse. So they all have degrees, they are degreed, all three of the, the counselors have degrees. They're actually advisors. We use the word advisor, not guidance counselors, because guidance counselors actually have special licenses with the Ohio Department of Education. The three of these employees do not have licenses with the Ohio Department of Education, but they do not work for MTC during the summer, and I can, we can send that back to MTC. I did not catch that in the MOU because I was thinking it was the MOU we had last year. We hadn't made any changes to it, so if it says that, Mr. Ratliff, I apologize, because I can attest that they work all summer for our students, so they spend the summer working with our students. They don't actually, they have no space at MTC either. Their offices are housed here, they're here year-round. They do the four tens like we do in the summer.
Okay.
And school counselors are some of our best-trained professionals in our building. They, they undergo 600 hours of observation, they do a ton of stuff, but career counseling is not part of their wheelhouse.
We, we use the terminology career advising, actually, so that it doesn't get, I, I prefer to career advising over counseling because they're actually advising. They're like an advisor like you have at college, like an advisor. They're specifically working on academics, like as far as academic pathway work, the college, all the college career readiness things that we do, that's what they're working on. Counseling, they aren't doing mental counseling. I guess when I think of counseling, I'm thinking more of some of the mental health pieces for students.
Different piece, different type of counseling, for sure.
Can we change that language in the MOU then, too? While we're at it? To just put the advisors?
Yes, I thought we had changed it to advising.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, that it's, they're advising, I mean, their titles are college and career advisors. Don't call them counselors.
All right.
Thank you.
So with those clarifications, I have a motion in a second.
Mr. Weidling?
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
And Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. All right. Bridges Corner, Bridges Number Corner, for the amount of $131,567.34. It is budgeted, it is through ESAR funds. Superintendent recommends approval of the purchase of Bridges' curricular resources and the professional development for grades K through five. Do I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
Which, what is this program?
Bridges Number Corner.
Well, what does it do? $131,000 for what?
So, we've been talking about our transition for our new math curriculum, and so this is the piece of the Bridges curriculum that we are going to move to in two years. This is a piece that we're going to implement in every classroom this year. So every classroom will have the Number Corner resources, and then we also have some intervention kits that we're purchasing for each building.
And is that...
Transition because we're going to get more?
Yeah, so we have a two-year plan to implement a new math curriculum at the elementary level.
Right.
So for the 23-24 school year, we are purchasing one component, which is the, the Bridges Number Corner for every single classroom, and then we're purchasing, I believe it's two intervention kits for each building that they can use as a resource. Then, when we go to year two, which will be 24, 25, we will implement Bridges' curriculum across every component of it.
And is that the paperwork that says the Math Learning Center at the bottom? Or is that different?
Yes.
Oh, it's at the top and bottom?
That's the Math Learning Center, yes.
Okay. And then we have, like, you're saying every classroom, like, when I start seeing these, and I don't know what's what, because there's a lot of papers here, with Bridges Intervention Set Number One, for instance, on the first paper that I had, it says Harrison Schools, there's two of those.
Yes.
But these are intervention sets, so they're not complete classroom sets, or they are?
These are for a resource for the school, the entire school to use. So mostly, our special education teachers will probably use them the most, but those interventions pieces will be available for the staff to use at that building.
And then when we get into, then there's more talk, I guess, and then it lists, like, kindergarten per building, like, you know, Harrison's getting three corner kindergarten packages, some schools, how are we figuring out what quantity? Because all the schools, at least in elementary, it's not like all of them are getting 10 or whatever. They're going two to three to 10. How, I mean, how are we getting...
So the order is based on the number of classrooms we have set for 23-24. So we may have four kindergarten classrooms at GW and three at Harrison, or we may have, you know, it, it varies by school, which is why each school is on a different quote, because we don't have the same number of classrooms at every building based off of enrollment.
Okay. And as far as this is a $131,000 purchase, then we have Math Expressions, which is a $62,000 purchase for K through five. Why do we need two programs if we're getting this program and then Math Expressions as well?
So we are maintaining Math Expressions as our primary curriculum for this school year. The second agenda item that you're referring to is to purchase the consumables for the student workbook, so that they will be able to use those for this upcoming school year.
That'll be for the last year for Expressions.
Right. It's kind of like a transition where we're going to do a mix of two, but Math Expressions remains our primary curriculum for the 23-24 school year, so we do need to purchase those consumables so that students have actual workbooks to work on. The Number Corner will, those resources will supplement the Math Expression curriculum and will also give us an opportunity for teachers to get familiar with that new curriculum. And then, in the second year, everyone will implement Bridges.
Which, this isn't the first time you've talked about this whole...
No, we've, we've, yeah, we've spent the year talking about math curriculum and...
And you brought it to the board, this is like the second time.
Standing committee.
Yeah.
And as far as, in two years, what will we need to, I mean, this is 131, two years from now, are we going to have more costs? Or, you know, how, what are we buying now that two years from now, we won't have to buy or vice versa? What are we going to have to pay two years from now?
Yeah, so the Number Corner is really a piece of it, so we won't, we won't have to purchase that piece again. We would have to purchase things like the consumables. I do have a list of the things that would need to be purchased the second year, which I'm, I can include in the update, so you can have that information.
And how much are we expecting that cost to be a couple of years from now?
I don't have it off the top of my hand, head.
Well, I mean, do you have a rough estimate? In the same hundreds of thousands of dollars?
Yeah, I mean, I can send it to you, I have it, I just don't have it prepared for tonight. I can look it up if you want to.
Yeah, I'm just trying to see what, what we're looking at a couple of years from now, because though that was talked about, price never was, nor was it given to committee people to talk about. And I'm not looking for some exact number, I'm just...
So projected, because obviously this will change, the third edition for Bridges Year Two, the cost is $161,662.
Okay.
Say that number again. Okay.
And that's what we're expecting a couple of years from now on full integration?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. All right. So I have a motion in a second. Veronica, call the roll, please.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item E, Math Expressions Student Materials. Dollar amount is $62,165.50 through ESAR monies. Superintendent recommends approval of purchase of Math Expressions curriculum resources for grades K through five for the 23-24 school year. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. I think we've had it.
Yeah, I think she explained it.
Great. Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right, item F, Studies Weekly. Amount of $25,653.91. It's through ESAR funds. Superintendent recommends approval of purchase of Studies Weekly curricular resources for grades K through five for the 23-24 school year. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
And Madam Superintendent, what, what is this, this looks like science or, or social studies?
This is actually a science and social studies resource. We have a print edition, so it's kind of like the weekly readers, if you were familiar with those at the elementary level, where students would actually take home their newsletters, and it would have news reports. So it's the informational text that they get, so we have a print copy that students can actually take home, and then they also have access to the online.
Okay. And you feel this is necessary outside the CKLA that was supposedly going to handle our science?
Yes, I do. I think it serves a different purpose, and I don't think our students could have enough interaction with informational texts. And also, the take-home piece, I support because they can take it home and their families can engage with them, or, you know, younger siblings, so they actually can take those home with them.
That's a piece that I like, the family engagement piece. Since we are, we don't do, we do the 20 minutes of reading anyway, so that can kind of help that piece out, and we don't send homework home. You know, that's not a policy, so that family engagement piece, I think is huge.
I don't think we're doing the 20, Read 20 anymore.
I'm sorry?
We're not pushing the Read 20 anymore.
We're not? Well, how come it's present at every...
I don't know.
Open house that we do?
It's not being pushed.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. Item G, Learning Without Tears. This is paid through Title One. Superintendent recommends approval of the purchase of Learning Without Tears curricular resources for handwriting and keyboarding for grades K through five for the 23-24 school year. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Go a second.
I'll second.
Discussion.
Could you explain, Madam Superintendent, what Learning Without Tears is?
Yes, it's actually two resources, and I did put a lot of background about this program in the administrative content for you prior to the meeting, but we have two resources here. We have handwriting without tears, and basically, that's a program that helps our students. We have a lot of students that come that need assistance with handwriting. that need assistance with handwriting. I don't know if you've witnessed some of the handwriting that is out there now, but our team feels very strongly that we do need this resource for our younger kids to help them learn how to do handwriting. So this provides resources for them as well as there's a cursive piece and there's an actual print piece. And then there's also a supplemental piece called Keyboarding Without Tears, which teaches our young students how to keyboard, which we know is a skill that they need, especially with our online testing, state testing that occurs. So again, I've had extensive meetings and conversations with my team, with teachers about the resources that are in front of you tonight and these are things that, that I'm bringing forward because I do feel that we need them in the district.
And I, I for one appreciate that, but last year, April 19th, 2022, this district spent $574,790.23 on CKLA and we were told by your team, the literacy committee, so I'm assuming they're still here, there wasn't a big deal, that CKLA would provide our writing for our children and we wouldn't need any supplements. That was why we were going with CKLA. We wouldn't need anything. And here we are tonight, we're now passing curriculum for science, which we were told that was going to cover science and help us with science, which now we're being told it's not, one year later. And I understand you weren't here, so I'm not, I'm not making this about you, but we have people in this district that told us that right here in this room and told us we would not have to supplement things. And even Mr. Weidling at said meeting were saying, oh, we're not going to have to supplement and they were assuring him we weren't going to have to supplement writing. And here we are with other programs now. This one is, you know, 31,000. The one before is, you know, 25,000. I mean, this, it's just crazy how much we have to supplement and how many errors are made when we're picking this stuff. And we rely on people coming to this board and giving us factual information and it was not factual then and I pointed it out, I believe I said, we did not appreciate the disingenuous cost by Amplify for the CKL originally. The program is up for a vote tonight and lacks writing and they told me it was completely fine.
Handwriting.
I think you're confusing.
It's handwriting and keyboarding. It's not writing to a prompt. It's handwriting.
And we're also talking about science and how that was science.
Let's stick with one thing that's misinformation. This is the mechanical piece of writing. My daughter teaches primary grades and kindergarten kids don't know how to hold a pencil when they come to us. You need assistance with those mechanical pieces. The, the writing in the CKLA is how to construct sentences, how to construct paragraphs.
Write to a prompt.
Prompts and all those things. This is, this is entirely different.
So Building Writers 2022 Edition First isn't about writing stuff?
That was going to be my next question. I love the fact that.
I understand cursive, yeah, I get it.
At the same time is fantastic for me. We're going to teach cursive. It's great with the keyboarding. But that was going to be my next question with the Building Writers, because again, that was my concern with CKLA and I said it.
Writers.
So in terms, yeah, but Building Writers, so if we've already done that for the first, that's my question for clarification, because I had said we're going to have an I told you so moment for Mr. Ratliff if we have to supplement CKLA with more materials, because we were guaranteed that we wouldn't have to supplement. That was one of the reasons why I ended up changing my vote, more or less, and voting yes. So would like, I hate to ask for assurances again, that this isn't supplementing something that we already got. Trust me, I understand the, the mechanical part of it. I understand the keyboarding part of it. I get that. Because when you move on and you get the Building Writers, is that not?
I don't think it's any part of what CKLA was intended to solve. This says handwriting and typing fluency are part of the foundational writing skills. Mastery of these lower level skills allows students to focus on the high level writing skills of composition. When students do not have mastery of these skills, their working memory is consumed with the task of producing letters, resulting them not having the cognitive desk space available for it, the organization expression of ideas. So this is very clearly the cognitive piece of writing, not.
The mechanical or cognitive?
Mechanical. Cognitive is.
That was the assurances that you thought CKLA was going to teach somebody how to hold a pencil? No, that's what I was, but you just said cognitive and you meant mechanical.
I mean, I have trusted our teachers that we don't need to spend $25,000 for someone to get up in front of a room and show them how to handle a pencil.
There are a lot of groans.
Well, I mean, I think they're smart enough to teach our students that. The fact that you guys think they need material to teach them how to hold a pencil.
Oh, my gosh. Yes.
I get it. We're in a disagreement. We're also in a disagreement and I believe CKLA was not supposed to talk about. No, I understand there's keyboarding in there, but there's also Building Writers, as Ted had talked about, on learning how to write, then building to more writing, which is what they came and told us CKLA was supposed to have.
I think you're, just, and I don't think you appreciate the students that come in our door at the kindergarten, kindergarten first grade level. They need.
I appreciate the skills of our teachers.
Well, I do too.
And in some classes, Rocky, they have even different pencils. Like when, when you come into kindergarten, the pencil might be a little bit thicker that they have to transition from that thicker pencil to a regular size. The whole idea behind this program and even alluding to the name, Writing Without Tears. I mean, it could be frustrating, especially if the young kids are looking at, and if they don't have our early childhood stuff. So this is a great program, this Learning Without Tears, and I highly recommend it.
Okay. Veronica, call the roll, please.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
No.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. All right. Item H, Amplify Science Middle School Curriculum. Superintendent, and this is coming out of Esser Funds. Superintendent recommends approval of the purchase of Amplify Science Curricular Materials for Middle School Students. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
As far as this is the Amplify, this is only science for middle school sixth, seventh, and eighth grade?
Correct. Yes.
There's some stuff here on grade five. No or yes?
Yes. So this is, this program is built on national science standards and Ohio has their own standards. So in order for us to meet all of the standards in Ohio, we have to get some of their fifth grade national standards, because they have the national, the NGSS standards for science and then each state can come up with their plan of how they're going to do it. So in Ohio, we have an overlap with the fifth grade national science standards. So that is why it's listed here. Our teachers need access to that to teach the standards for Ohio.
But despite the reference to fifth grade, it's used in the middle school.
Yeah.
And as far as this, on the cost, this represents for how many years or?
We are getting digital access for five years for teacher and student.
Okay. And is this the half discounted rate that Amplify does? Or did someone not ask for that?
That part I do not know.
Okay. Thank you.
And when was the last time we adopted science and that in middle school?
I believe it is maybe nine years. I mean, we have a lot of curriculum that's out of date, so I can't keep all of them straight, but it's been a very long time since we've updated our science curriculum. Absolutely.
Okay.
And is this replacing a curriculum or we don't have a curriculum?
It's replacing.
Replacing whatever we're using?
Yeah.
Okay.
From nine years ago.
Yeah, it's very outdated.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. Item I, Savas, I hope I'm saying that right, African American Odyssey. This is in the amount of $6,048 through Esser Funds. Superintendent recommends approval of the purchase of Savas Americans, African American Odyssey textbook as a curriculum resource for African American studies at the high school. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion. I'll second. I love this book. I love this series.
As, as far as this, is this just for one course?
Yes.
Do we have multiple courses in this, meaning, you know, whatever, African American history and then another?
I believe we only have one right now.
Okay. Are we looking?
And this will be a class set of textbooks and access to the online resources, I believe, for five years.
Correct. Are we looking for a second course or a line of courses? Or no, at this point?
That would be something I would probably take back to the history team here at Harding, because this is really all driven by the team of teachers that's here right now, so.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
I will certainly take that back and pose that question.
Obviously, you can't cover that in one, one course. So, okay. Thank you.
Call the roll, please. Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
And Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. Item J, Edmentum Apex Six Through 12 Online Curriculum. In the amount of $29,600. This is paid for through Esser in Title Four. Superintendent recommends approval of the purchase of Edmentum Apex Online Curricular Resources for Grades Six Through 12 for the 23, 24 school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion.
When it comes to Apex, and I've raised this in the past and I don't want a no vote to send the wrong message, so I'm just going to say right now, I'm going to abstain from this one. I know, and again, I'm not making an accusation, but I know Apex has been.
You don't have to abstain, do you?
Oh, I want to, though. That's, I just want to explain why I'm doing that. I'm not making the accusation, but I know that there are stories around the country where Apex has been abused and kids have not spent as much time during credit recovery as they would have in the actual class, to the point where it's become almost, I don't know if incentive is the right word, to use Apex rather than, well, I'd rather do that than go to the regular class. I, I want to make sure that we have integrity behind the diplomas that we just handed out at commencement. And I know Apex is one of the, the programs that has a, I'll just put a negative stigma against it, and I think as a former teacher, sometimes for good reason. So again, the accusation isn't there, but I think it's something that we as a board and as a district need to take a closer look at that to make sure that there is integrity behind the work being done with the Apex program.
And like Scott, I'm concerned as well with Apex, have been for years. I've seen students use it and they just kind of go through the motions, because I think it's multiple choice.
I, there were few methods to prevent them from cheating.
I mean, I'm willing to approve it for this next school year, but I would like to see us do something different. I don't know what that different is.
I don't disagree with any of you. Either one of you are saying, I think the administrative content here says that administration is well aware, like you talked about, and they've taken some corrective actions at each building, putting people, assistant principals assigned to each building to monitor that. We're continuing to look and add and revise and refine our processes for using the program. So I, I think that we've got people on top of that.
I'd like to see the results. And I appreciate that. Yes. Yes. I just want to see the results of it.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Okay. Mr. McKinnis?
I'm sorry. Hold on one second. Is this just one year? I mean, how long is this?
Yes.
Is this a one-year?
Yeah.
Yes.
We need some online.
Yeah, yeah. No, I just want to make sure the term is one year.
Yeah.
Okay.
So Tabitha's working on this?
Correct. We, we have not had a district person that has been over blended learning. So as we have been redistributing roles, that's one of the things that we're going to have a closer pulse on and not just leave it to the building level. So the program, I'm not, you know, to me, it may be more of the implementation. I think we've, we've had to update our Apex. It hasn't been updated. So there's little things that we've found that moving forward, we plan to address, make sure that everyone's trained in using Apex, that you can't teach Apex unless you've actually been trained in how to use the program. So there's a few things that really have not been in place in the process or procedure of blended learning that we feel strongly that we will be able to improve, or at least, like you said, have a better understanding of what some of the issues may possibly be.
Are, are you saying that in the past, it was left up to a building level?
Correct.
It wasn't overseen by some district officials, what you're saying?
Correct.
So like the building principal would be responsible, whoever?
Yeah, or sometimes teachers are the lead.
Yeah, I got you.
Some of the school counselors have been involved in monitoring. But we feel strongly that we need to have an administrator at the building assigned to monitor as well as with my team at the district level.
Makes sense.
So when will this committee be in place?
Tabitha's going to get that started in the fall.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. We've had our discussion. Call the roll.
And one, one for, you're suggesting that potentially we do the committee or let her work on potential integrity problems being addressed within the course of the next year that Mr. Weidling is talking about? I mean, that's the suggestion, anyway.
Yes. Yeah. I, I, I'm pleased to hear it.
Okay. Yep. Thank you.
Personally.
Yep.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
I'm staying.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. Item K, Ohio Health Grief Support. Superintendent recommends approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Ohio Health for a program which offers free grief support, education, and consultation services to grieving children and teens. Do I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion.
I'd just point out that this allows, I guess, if we have the right people to, if the right people are informed, this is a service that is available to our students. Yeah, and, and probably staff members as well, right?
Yeah. A free service offered by Ohio Health for.
For children and teens.
For grief. But we have to obviously initiate, I just want the public to be aware so that, you know, obviously going through hard times, they can contact their building personnel and then they can access the free service offered by Ohio Health for, for grief.
All right. Veronica, call the roll, please.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. Item L, Village Network Therapeutic and Mental Health School-Based Health Services. Superintendent recommends the approval of an agreement between Marion City Schools and Village Network for provision of therapeutic and mental health school-based health services for students during the 23, 24 school year. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, I think in their contract, they point out that the TVN staff will contact the guardians of all referred youth and work directly with families to complete the intake process. So immediately, they're contacting, this is contacting families and guardians. Thank you.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
And Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. All right. Is there a need to go to executive session for anything on the consent agenda?
Not on the consent agenda, but for item number one. I have a separate, if we want to do it that at the end or if we want to do it now, that's fine.
What, back, what's item one?
I sent an email about us.
No, no, no. What do you mean?
You want some executive session sometime tonight?
We do it now, that's fine. If we do it later, that's fine.
I think for our audience, they would do that later.
We'll do it at the end. Okay. All right.
Unless there's something else you want to go in for on the consent calendar.
All right. I need a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Weidling?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
And Mrs. McKay?
Yes. Motion carried. All right.
And obviously, Madam President, we thank the services of Brenda Anderson, who's retiring from our district.
Thank you. The, the people that are leaving us, we are sorry to see you go and we wish you all the best. Okay. So, all right. Item 13, we have a list there of our next board meetings. So we may add a few because we like meeting with each other all the time, so. Committee reports. Anything from extracurricular?
We talked today about, I guess the main take is they've kind of tabled, Olympia can talk about it, she once kind of tabled the fee issue for facilities to give her more time to look into that with what other. into that with what other districts and what we should be doing here, taking into account past practices for fee facilities, fees being used for certain facilities. I know that was brought up by both music and athletics, so that's kinda being tabled to give her more time to dive into that. Also, I think there were discussions about providing coaches Title IX education, which I think in this day and age, 85 or 90 percent of our coaches would probably get that if we're also making sure that our teachers are getting that. And I think it's such an important issue that I brought it up to maybe make sure that we're doing that yearly, especially when we're in the gender identification or re-identification and everything that goes into that, to make sure people, everybody knows what Title IX is, where to report, and do those things that Title IX requires. So, I think that was the biggest take from today, am I...
Yeah, I just wanna add one thing. The, we're further ahead on the fees for the actual facilities, but we also have another fee for students and what we charge them to participate in extracurricular activities. So, those are two areas that we're looking at, but I believe we'll probably have something to the board for approval on the facility fees before we go with the extracurricular 'cause like Mr. Ratliff said, it's pretty widespread, so we wanna try to gather as much information as we can and make the best recommendation for your consideration for approval. That would be best for Marion City Schools.
Because the last few years, we waived the participation fee.
And then we have the difference between fees that boosters charge our student versus fees that the district charges. So, those are things that we wanna collect some additional information on before we, and we don't wanna hold kids up 'cause their programs are starting now.
Right.
Yeah, so I think she's indicating she doesn't wanna do something mid-year.
Right.
Or really quick and giving it more time, food for thought, I guess, for until this time next year, going, you know, maybe even sooner, but yes, I think, I think banned was indicating maybe if they could have some acknowledgement by March because it's obviously expensive if they gotta raise money or if they gotta do whatever. So, I think that's kinda where they're shooting for. I don't wanna speak out there, but...
All right. All right, and buildings and grounds and safety?
Yeah, I wanted to suggest, since we have so many things going on, that perhaps, 'cause I think we only meet like four times a year, with such major projects going on, would you mind if we met more frequently, 'cause it's you and I?
Yeah, I think it was monthly, like the regulars, and then it got to quarterly, and then last time, I think, there was talk that Buildings and Grounds was so busy that, and he really had nothing but what we already knew about the fix-up and the waxing and stuff, that we would then reconvene. That's the way I took it in August, because, you know, other than the fixing that's already going on, that we already know about, there was nothing really discussed 'cause we're not in possession.
We got big, big projects with the baseball, and then concerns about softball and all this.
Correct, I mean, I can meet whenever you guys want to, but I think the understanding was it was reconvening in August, which is only like two months from now, now, but yeah, because he was, already had a list of things and projects in place that were getting worked on, and everybody already knew about it, I think. And if, I don't know if he's here, I think, you know.
We can do it in July, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, they're obviously, yeah.
I'll set it up for July.
Thanks, Ted. All right, communications has not met.
What'd you say?
It's gonna be at 7:00 AM.
Kidding. We'll do a special one for him for 6:30.
Hopefully noon is a better time.
I'm only here on the noon.
Yeah.
All right, communications has not met. Curriculum, have you guys met?
I wasn't able to, we did.
We met, but it's gonna be, since there's gonna be some major changes, can we just table that as far as that's concerned, curriculum?
Diversity and equity, I know I couldn't make it to the last meeting, I don't think you did, and, but Johnny did send us an update, so.
And Johnny chaired a wonderful diversity, equity, and inclusion today. He was on the planning committee that, I saw several of our Marion City Schools, personnel there was at Delaware Hayes, so Johnny was very instrumental in that planning and had a real strong presence there, so I was appreciative of how he represented Marion City Schools today at that diversity equity, Elevate to Equity, it was called, at Delaware Hayes today, it was very nice. Johnny did a great job.
Did they record that by chance, or no?
It was a lot of breakout sessions, but there were a lot of different people who we have a database that would be nice to see if they could come into our district and do some things and professional developments. Keynoter was great, and we saw him in Atlanta when we went there, so. Johnny did a good job.
All right, and finance, I don't think, I think we met before the last meeting. And policy, and we do have some policies that have first readings. Legislative liaison, Ted?
I just wanna point out that I think all of us ought to be aware of what's going on at the state legislature about education. Too many things for me to talk about tonight, but I'll give you a couple examples. It's about to be passed by the Senate and the House, I think, to change ODE's responsibilities. We all have reported to ODE and looked to them as our sort of guiding force on many, many curriculum issues and so forth. They're now gonna take away ODE's responsibilities and limit them to licensure of teachers and boundaries of school districts. That'd be their only two responsibilities. And they're moving all other responsibilities of the ODE over to a cabinet position in the governor's office, so it will be very, you know, while the ODE was appointed and elected officials from various regions of the state, as well as some appointed by the governor, now it'll all be governor-appointed individuals and be very political in terms of what happens from the ODE. So, that's a very large concern, it should be for all of us, that our, things that are dictated will now be by the political arm of whatever party's in control. Another thing that happened here recently was the House version of the budget. We would've benefited a couple of million dollars or so, and then the Senate changed that to take away all of that, and they did readjust some things. So, we're gonna be about where we budgeted or forecast, but not a whole lot of new money that could've come from the House version to a district like ours. So, those kinds of things are happening, and I don't know whether the Senate version will get finally passed, but we certainly favored the House version, where we would've gotten a lot more money for our district. And so, those are just a couple of things that are happening at the state legislature besides issues of curriculum and other things that are being passed that we have to live with if they pass and the governor signs it, so.
Vouchers is a huge piece right now, too.
I would speak to that, that, what is it, a billion dollars?
Yeah, one or two billion dollars.
That are being funneled off to the charter schools and less money available for public education. So, you know, that's, that's a big deal as far as finances going forward for districts like yours.
I don't know if you guys get emails from Ohio Equity and Adequacy. They've been on the forefront of school funding since at least 1997, when the DeRolph case was heard, so watch, get on their webpage, they have a Facebook page that does an update. Ohio Equity and Adequacy. Bill Phyllis is the guru of school finance for Ohio. He's kind of amazing, so follow, follow that, and you'll get a lot of really good information. Ohio Capital Journal, they do a lot of reporting on the budget and how it's impacting education. They do some really good reporting, so if you're interested in finding out more about what's going on with Ohio public education, they would be a good one to read because public education is being threatened like it's never been threatened before. I mean, make no mistake, they don't like public education, they want charters. So, anyway, and with that being said, student achievement, Tara, do you have?
No, we'll let the recognition of our athletes at the beginning of the meeting.
Yep, all right. Let's see, item 15A, first reading of board policy updates. They're listed there below. I won't read them all, but it's technical corrections, volunteers, school safety, emergency situations at schools, advertising and commercial activities. And then we have that first read there.
And on those, we're rescinding two volunteer sections, is that because it's just going into this 18120?
Yes, so the recommendation from Neola is those volunteer policies were listed under staff, and just to clarify that volunteers are not staff, they're recommending we rescind both of those, remove them from staff policies and make a volunteer policy.
And then we would plan to adopt this at the next board meeting?
Yes, and there's also, in addition to that volunteer policy regarding an outcome from OSHA, that they're requiring PAPs for any volunteers that are attached to athletics. So, that's all, that highlighted, or that big green section there is in addition to those old policies.
Okay, as far as the volunteer section, we don't, so now we're not gonna have one for teachers, will they fall under this volunteer if they're volunteering beyond their duties? Would they fall in this section?
Yeah, everybody would fall under the 8,000 series for volunteers.
And, and is there a reason, I guess when I'm looking at this, and I would encourage, I just know what my thought process is, under here, I know you have to do and get a, the permit, and it has, it has our volunteers being, obtaining the cost of a permit to be at the expense of the volunteer instead of the expense at the district. I am encouraging us to consider or think about having those that volunteer and need the permit that the board would offer to pay that expense, because I don't think the person who's volunteering for a season or a year or many times many years should have to then not only volunteer, but then pay the expense to volunteer. I think that's asking them to go well above what we're needing from them. I think we should consider that cost, it's not a lot.
You raise a good point, and we did consider in the committee meeting whether there were two choices, at our cost or at the volunteers' cost. And we have always, up to this point, asked the volunteer to pay for that, and I have no objection to what you're suggesting, but I would like to have a cost analysis of what that costs if a volunteer, now if a volunteer, we pay for it and the volunteer quits in a week, we eat that cost. And so, you know, volunteers have a little more volatile schedules.
Maybe a reimbursement at the completion of...
A season or something that will reimburse would be, I would be, I just don't, I like the thought, because obviously if you're a contracted employee and you're earning a wage or you're gonna get that, I understand that maybe they should pay, but...
I don't know what that cost is, is it a $50 or $100, what is it for that week?
We can make sure you have it before the...
Because we approve many volunteers every month on our list, so if you're talking about $5,000 a month in approval, that might be prohibitive, but if it's less than that, I wouldn't oppose picking up the cost.
And then the other thing that we have here in this policy is you cannot volunteer, so I'm assuming you can't work, if you committed certain criminal offenses.
Right.
Some of these could be years removed. And I think, you know, in my reading of everything, first of all, we know in our community there's people that get in trouble that rehabilitate themselves, and they could be years removed from something, 20, 30 years, and have one of these offenses that could be a possession of drug offense, and the person's been sober for 20, 30 years, and we're saying if we pass this as is, that they can never even volunteer, let alone be a paid position. I think that should be looked at, obviously, I mean, if we're talking about murder and stuff like that, I get that, or we're talking about sexual offenses, I get those, but some of, I mean, we understand the makeup of our community, we also understand that getting volunteers is harder and harder, and someone could have rehabilitated themselves and have a story to tell to keep our young youth from going down a similar path that they fell into, and they might be able to identify those that are going down the same path that they maybe have experienced earlier in their life quicker than someone that doesn't have that experience. So, I don't know that I'm for all those exclusions. I believe if we contact legal, I think it's up to, I think, you know, I've done some research in this area on stuff in my professional background, I'm not trying to act like legal counsel for this board, but I think it rests with the board to make those decisions on a case-by-case basis for some of those people, depending on time of the offense, if it's way back, depending on the seriousness of the offense, and so forth. So, I'm just encouraging us to take a deeper dive into that whole section and not just completely wipe out some individuals that are trying to volunteer, do the right thing, and maybe coach our kids to not go down a similar path.
It looks like this is part of OHSAA bylaws, and also it's citing Ohio Revised Code 3313, 3319, so it might be more complex than we might believe. So, I would just want that additional information.
Wasn't there a time, too, when we, well, not we, I wasn't on the board, that there were discussions about second chance-like opportunities for individuals on that person-by-person kind of a basis? Like, I don't know what kind of discussion that there was, but I think there was discussion about certain individuals and second chance kind of things that would allow them to volunteer within the district?
Yeah, I would, I would like to see what...
Isn't there, in that law, rehabilitatable and non-rehabilitatable offenses? So, if it's non-rehabilitative, it's a hard no, but if it is a rehabilitative offense, I think you could consider.
Now, I, my research would've been several years ago, but the lead case was an African-American gentleman in Cincinnati that had, was about 20 years removed from his offense, 15 years. He was guiding youth, he was taking them home, the board knew him, staff knew him, he had been completely rehabilitated, and they then approved them, the case went up, someone objected to that, obviously the board had, I think it was a five vote, objected, went up, and they basically said, hey, that's the board's decision, we're not getting into basically the community area, basically. So, I don't know if that's still the case or not, but I just hope that we can look into that, because I think...
Get some clarification.
I've heard some discussion on second chance kind of opportunities.
Restoration.
That's why we have first readings. Good discussion.
All right, I need a motion to go into executive session.
Show move.
Sorry? Well, I thought we were gonna talk about that in the executive session.
What was?
Is that the reason for these, I mean, is that why we're going there?
Right, yeah, just so it shouldn't be a...
Oh, I know, I'm saying...
And then, and then, so, it's to go, hang on.
Yeah, yeah.
Everybody's like trying to...
So, we're trying to do a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of treasurer search and teachers contract questions. So, I need a motion?
Show move.
Second.
Okay. All right. Call the roll, please.
Mr. McKinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Dyer? Mr. Wiedling?
Yes.
Mr. Ratliff?
Yes.
Mrs. McKay?
Yes, motion carried. All right, we're going to adjourn for a while, hopefully not too long. The only real, I think the only action we may have will be, well, we have to have a treasurer search firm hired tonight, so that's what we're going into executive session for and to talk about a teacher contract, and I wish you all the best, have... for and to talk about a teacher contract, and I wish you all the best, have safe travels home, and we're done.
See you in July.